7:00 PM, let me call to order the meeting of Meramec Planning Board for Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. Let me remind everyone who will address the board to sign in on the clipboard that's on the table and to make sure the microphones are turned on and speak clearly into them. Our next planning board meeting after tonight is September 18th, 7:00 PM, in this room, Matthew Thornton Room. Let's see, we don't have any alternates to deal with for pointing today. So with that, planning and zoning administrators report, Tim.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your pack you'll find a memo dated August 30th with regional impact recommendations for the Hilton Trust subdivision and the two Mark Rivet projects, the lot line adjustment in the site plan. Staff's recommendation is that the board find these are not of regional impact as they do not meet the criteria established by the board.
What's the will of the board with respect to the staff's recommendation about the regional impact?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation and consider that these items are not of regional impact.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Second by Neil. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to uphold the staff's recommendations on regional impact. Tim, anything else for us tonight?
Nothing until we get to item seven on the agenda.
Okay. For the benefit of anybody who's taking a look at our agenda, we expect items three, five, and six have requested continuances to the October meeting, so no one need hang out for those if anyone is. Anything by members of the planning board for the staff before we move on with the agenda? Then, the first item on the agenda is to take up the Peter Olivier and Sherry Olivier applicants and Siam 04 Realty as the owner's continued review for acceptance and consideration of a waiver of full site plan review to permit employee parking for an off-site landscaping business as well as an employee and tractor trailer parking for an off-site moving business, both of which are in addition to the existing onsite restaurant use. The parcel is located at 75 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation District's Tax Map 2B Lot 28. The item has been continued from the June 19th and July 17th, 2018 meeting, and we have a request from the applicant that they continue to October 2nd. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we take up the applicant's request for a continuance?
The only other thing I would add is, in addition to the reasons stated in the applicant's letter, there was also a minor fire at that facility in the last couple of weeks, which probably is another factor which justifies the request for continuance.
Mr. Chairman, could I comment on that?
Of course.
I zoomed, I heard the report of the fire, which was apparently a pan of sausages. According to the WMUR, I went around immediately to see and it looked as though the damage to the restaurant was minor. However, I feel, before we get to October, whatever it is, I think could we ask the staff to procure a letter from Captain John Manuelius to, in the indications of which the fire department had any problems with putting out that fire. It was a very minor fire. I suspect it probably, they could still get the engines around by the look of the site when I got there, but I think it would be worth having his input. No problem.
I think that makes sense to get that feedback since we're talking about all these changes to parking and parking trucks and trailers and how vehicles would move around the site. And obviously, we wish the applicant and owners all the best in recovering from that situation and getting their business back together and back going. So what's the will of the board with respect to the motion to continue?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue this item till October the 2nd, 2018, at 7:00 PM in this room with no further notice to abut us.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second by Counsel Koenig. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to continue that item. Tim with, oh, sorry, no. Item number four on agenda, Bernstein Schur Sawyer and Nelson PA and Meridian Land Services Inc. as the applicants and the Hilton Trusts as the owners. And this is review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a three-lot minor subdivision. The parcel is located at an unnumbered parcel on Continental Boulevard in the R-1 Residential District, Tax Map 2B Lot 29314. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your pack you'll find a memo from Assistant Planner Kelly Shamo. This is a relatively straightforward three-lot subdivision. There are a fair amount of wetlands on the property. The access is proposed through a shared driveway for amongst the three lots. This is on the state portion of Continental Boulevard, so the project will require DOT driveway access permit, and that is part of the recommendations from staff in terms of conditional approval. The other item, they have not requested a waiver for sidewalk, however, it's been staff's interpretation that because this is a NHDOT jurisdiction part of the highway and that NHDOT is not going to be accepting sidewalks until we have a sidewalk plan, that the waiver would not be necessary along this stretch of the Continental Boulevard.
Thank you for the introduction, Tim. Before we hear from the applicant, can you clarify, we've got the law firm and the engineering firm listed as applicants, are they advocates for the applicant or the interested parties?
We're not, we're not the, we represent them.
Okay.
We're not the actual party. Sometimes they list the submitter and the plan preparer as applicants. I can tell you that we are not.
Okay.
We represent, I represent the Hilton Trusts.
So they're the party in interest, okay.
The Hilton, Hilton Trusts are the party in interest.
Perfect.
Does that help?
Yeah, does. Thanks. Ready, set, go.
Okay. Thanks. The Hiltons have had this piece of property for quite some time, as we all know, Continental Boulevard was...
I know we see you a lot, but you skipped over the introduction.
Well, I'm Greg Michael. With me is Ken Clinton. Am I doing so far better now? Is that it?
Thanks.
Fine. Anyway, Hiltons have had this property for a while. As you know, some of this land was bisected by Continental Boulevard a number of years ago, and they were left with the area that we're looking at here. I would point out that we've been looking at doing something with this for quite some time, and we're proposing a three-lot residential subdivision, thanks to the good work of Meridian. They outlined all of the wet areas, the soils have been identified. And in response to carefully looking at this and surveying, it was discovered that there was a minor boundary line issue associated with these properties. And we were successful in working with Penachuck, and there's a boundary, recorded boundary line agreement at the registry, and this is the land that the Hiltons now own. I just want to point that out. And if you see in that corner, you see that little encroachment of a conservation area right there? Do you see that? That was ostensibly on Penachuck land, and again, there was some confusion over deeds and plans. And what the, what we agreed to do, the Hilton Trusts agreed to do, is actually expand that conservation area throughout one of the lots. You can see that, that we've, we're adding to the conservation area, that whole area that you see is we're adding to the conservation area at the quest of Penachuck, and we thought it was a pretty good idea that we were able to still make this work and add that to conservation area, and that is being covenanted for that. In addition, it's on Continental Boulevard. I know there were remarks by the police, I guess, about this. We understand the remarks, but in point of fact, it is residential land, and point of fact, Ken Clinton proposed only one entrance, just one. The site distances are very good, there's only, there's three lots, but there's only one road cut. Our application is with the state for approval of that road cut. You can see the plan there showing how it would work in relation to the lot layout that we've, that we proposed. It works quite well, it will be serviced by wells and septics, and there's plenty of land area for that purpose. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. The balance of the conditions that you have here aren't really problematic. I will point out that we did not need Conservation Commission review, we're not involved in any of their, basically their jurisdiction. But again, the other items that are mentioned are kind of standard items that might be addressed, and I think I'll let Ken take you through a few more points that I'm sure he wants to make, but it's pretty straightforward, we'd like the board's favorable approval on it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Are there questions by members of the board for discussion items?
If, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, with regard, and Attorney Michael brought it up, the item eight from the proposed conditions of approval addresses the comments from the police department. I debated whether or not those should even be written in the memo, however, in deference to the plan, to the police department and for purposes of discussion, we did leave those comments, and I would agree with Attorney Michael and with the applicant that by designing this as a shared driveway and only having one point of access, they've done everything they can to make that as safe a driveway as possible for these three lots.
Thank you for that comment, Tim, and I also agree that regardless of what's going on on Continental, they own the land and it's residentially zoned, and so you can build a house on it. Houses have driveways.
Thank you.
Dan?
The road, private, public, is it, what's the plan?
Road, it's a private drive, three-car, three-family, private driveway, so I would hesitate to use the word road. The shared portion's about 250 feet long.
Okay.
So much shorter than some of the single-family driveways in town.
So is that going to be up to the homeowners to maintain?
Yes.
So, okay.
We'll have a, we're going to have a covenants that will require all three homeowners to share in the repair, maintenance, and upkeep of the road. It's not uncommon, and that's what's going to be done here.
Part of staff comments correctly identified legal documents would be submitted and reviewed, so there's an access and utility easements that will run with the land and covenants on the maintenance and upkeep of the driveway.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Could I ask, I mean, you're dividing it into three, and I understand the driveway is going to service the two portions.
Three lots.
All three.
All three. Take a look at that.
We have the driveway plan on the last page.
Alistair, can you see that slide?
There you go.
Can you see that slide? There's your three houses, you can see it coming in from Continental. You see how that's coming in?
Oh, I see.
You see it now?
The drive-in to the north, the drive-in to the south, and then continues on.
And then there. Servicing all three.
Well, I have to admit, as somebody goes up and down that road, because it's been in my back, nearly in my backyard, I have to say I understand the police comments. I understand why we're not allowed to use them, but I do feel, there is some concern that, I mean, if the state gives you, go ahead, go ahead, but I think, I think the average speed down that road is close to the 50 they mentioned, and I, I wouldn't want to turn out of there going towards the Town Center of Meramec. I wouldn't mind turning out of there going down towards 101A, but good luck to coming out.
Well, you know, only one thing to say, I mean, it's 45, when you leave the Reedsbury Fire Station heading north, it's a 45-mile zone, and people do 50 there, there's no secret.
No, it's 30 and 40.
But, but my point is, is there's plenty of interconnects and intersections and people with businesses and homes along that road. It works fairly well. It does. I just point that out for the, whatever it's worth. That's all, I hear you, I understand.
And to that point, I'd just like to add, as much as Greg might have inferred that I'm smarter than I am and selected to only use one access point on this subdivision, the 1992 plans for DOT indicates the Hilton property as the land was being acquired by the state for the construction. It was noted here in the plan, one access granted RT is right, meaning station right, this property, as well as in the taking deed itself, which states also that taking with the above describing lands all rights of access light, air, and view over, from, and to the same from the remainder of abutting lands to the new highway, excepting and reserving one point of access on the south side, being the subject property. So we're merely following the directive of DOT back in the early 90s when they established this right-of-way. This property only has one, so we utilize it.
Good luck, I mean, I'm quite happy if you do it, but I just share the police's thoughts.
And likewise, since I agree with Tim's comment about having those on the record, I just wanted to also have in the public record that we're following what the DOT directed all those years ago.
Well, I think that's wonderful.
The only other comment, and I agree with Greg's statement, that we find the staff comments appropriate and generally fairly easy to address. One item regarding the wells, we showed individual wells on these three lots because we felt it was the proper and safe thing to do. We are aware, in speaking with MVD, that there is water along Continental Boulevard, except it's on the opposite side of the road. If a developer wants to go in here and finds it financially sound or better advantageous to pursue MVD water, we have a note in the plan that says these properties, the lots, will be serviced by either individual wells or MVD water, and I'd like that to remain as an option for a developer to pursue. If they find it's cost-effective to jack under the road, tie into MVD water and bring it across, I'd like them to have the flexibility to do that. However, I couldn't just rely on that, so we showed the wells, proving that each lot, building envelope, could fully support the house, the septic, and the well, plus the underground utilities.
Are you wanting separate septics?
Individual septics, three septics.
And those, of course, there isn't anything else tied to it, no?
Yeah.
Is there any comments from MVD on what you just said?
Only to the extent that they agree that it's across the street and it would be available, and I said, that's all I needed to know now, because I need to prove individual wells work. And the tie-in for MVD water, that would be a bonus in the future, and again, that's more financially driven than anything else.
Good.
So if that time, I would, I'd like the...
Staff, staff does not have an issue with that because the lot size and zoning characteristics remain the same regardless of whether it's private wells or municipal.
We're not giving extra density, we're not pursuing that. It's a, it's an extra thing during the building process if the developer says financially, I mean, three artisan wells compared to jacking under the road, they can weigh the cost at that time of construction to make sure what's better for everybody. So that's my only additional comment.
Thank you for that. Other comments or questions?
Just out of curiosity, with the DOT in the letter that you guys are going to need that says you can do that road, like, what's the progress status of that? I mean, is it anywhere close, or?
It's been submitted, we had conversations, and this is an interesting scenario where it's not necessarily District 5, which oversees most of the DOT-related permits, it's the Turnpike Department.
Okay.
The section is assigned to the Turnpike Department. They, they look at the permits the same way, we've had conversations with them, they have the permit. Typically, it's a couple of week turnaround. We have site distance, we have safe approach, we have an apron, down pitch off the road, we have everything that they're looking for.
Okay.
So we don't foresee any problems.
No, it sounds good, I just know that sometimes there are challenges. It sounds like you're heading in the right direction, plus if you have documents like that.
They can be, and what, when, if they need the supporting documents, I don't believe we sense the copy of the plan or the deed, it's self-apparent that we have a right to do that.
Okay.
But we could certainly furnish that if they had, had a request.
Thanks.
Tom?
I would certainly echo Alistair's concerns and the police department's, and just saying a little bit tongue-in-cheek because the town is wanting to put a fire department further down the road, closer into town, creating another driveway curb cut. So while I understand that's reasonable, this is the first one on that road, and the first one with the traffic that's used to what it's been, it's going to be a surprise to folks. So it is going to be a concern. Doesn't mean it can't be safe, it means everybody's got to be a lot more careful.
Understood.
It'd be nice if there could be turnouts or something like that, but I don't imagine anything like that's going to happen here.
Other comments or questions? The first order of business for the board is to accept the application as complete.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept this proposal as complete and is suitable for consideration of final approval.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Second by Dan. Any discussion on completeness? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0. Feeling that we may have had the questions that we'd like to have asked and answered, we'll certainly gavel open a public hearing and see if any member of the public wishes to weigh in, and seeing that there's only one other person in the room who's interested.
He's with me.
No members of the public are here, so we'll close the public hearing as briefly as that. Any further discussion with the applicant?
The only thing I would say is just a concurrence with the staff's recommendation that the waiver for sidewalk is not necessary given the state highway situation in the DOT direction, and then a discussion on whether or not, what to do with condition eight. I think the discussion, it's on the record, is appropriate, but I would certainly say that if this does go to a conditional approval, the item eight be removed from the notice of decision.
Okay. So first with respect to the sidewalk, the only question I have in considering determining that the sidewalk isn't necessary is, is there any provision for an easement along this section? If there's any sense of building a public sidewalk with public funds along this way, does the applicant have any objection to creating such a thing? I'm not sure how far back the state's right-of-way goes.
My guess, and I'm just saying this without, without having direct knowledge, that because this is Bureau of Turnpikes and not District 5, they do not accommodate sidewalks at Turnpikes.
That's what I would agree.
Yeah, they keep trying to give us this road, though.
They do.
But the, the only, this would likely be the only development on this side of the road between here and 101A because the rest is all Penachuck or Southwood, corporation protected land for their watershed.
It looks like the easement for, I mean, the, the right-of-way for Continental Boulevard goes 50 feet off the edge of pavement anyway, so...
There's plenty, at this point in time.
Take it back, it's 150-foot right-of-way.
Yeah, 75 on either side, so it's a good, a good length of road for, a good, good amount of space that is already there if somebody ever decided they needed it for a sidewalk. Not that I think that that's in anybody's near future, but...
I would agree that if, if it were turned over the town with 150-foot right-of-way, I think we might be able to fit a sidewalk in there.
Yeah. This would be our first complete street end town.
But before we get carried away, but I would point out that there are people jogging, cycling, walking dogs along that, but I still think there's plenty of room for them.
So the recommendation or the suggestion by staff is that the board take up the question of whether to determine officially that a sidewalk waiver is not necessary on this section because of the circumstance with the state's control of the highway and their desire not to approve them. What's the will of the board on that question?
I think, Mr. Chairman, given the fact that with all the toings and froings, we are already in with the DOT, that it would be unnecessary to have a waiver.
I tend to agree with that, Tom, do you have an opinion?
No, I agree.
Yeah, me too, same.
Everybody agrees, okay. So there you got consensus that a waiver isn't necessary for that. And then the other question that staff has asked us to take up specifically is whether to strike condition number eight from the staff's memo of conditions of approval, which is the comment from the police department about the turning on and off of Continental Boulevard. And actually, the condition only simply requires the police department encourages that this be a major topic of conversation, that they don't actually ask for any actions.
Which has been already.
We've talked about it.
Yeah, there aren't any actions called for in that.
That's why I'd rather... That's why I'd rather not include it with the decision letter if it's the will of the board.
Yeah. I agree, I think that we've done what the police department has asked us to do, but also since it's a condition that can't be fulfilled, it's, doesn't, doesn't belong on the list of things to do.
Can't be not fulfilled either, but yeah, take it out.
Yeah. Okay. Is that enough consensus of the board on that, or you need an actual vote on that? Okay. Does the board have any other discussion about this application at all, heads or tails? Then it's appropriate for the board to consider what final action, if any, would like to take.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant final approval for this three-lot minor subdivision based on the memo written by Kelly Shamel on August 30th, 2018, with the exception of paragraph eight, which should be removed, and all subsequent paragraphs re-numbers to tie up.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion to grant conditional final approval subject to the memo minus number eight?
Second.
Counsel Koenig.
You've got to say something, you can't just wave your hand.
Especially if you're over here on the left, because I'm never looking this way.
Oh, I know.
Okay, motion and proper second to grant conditional final approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0. You're all set.
Appreciate your time, Tom.
Thank you very much. Greg, if you don't have to run off, can you hang out for a minute? I wanted to catch you on a different subject real quick. Five minutes? I think we'll be done with our meeting in, yeah.
You, not me.
Who?
You.
Me?
Yeah, sure. Hang out for a couple of minutes, I'll catch you after the meeting, we should be done here in five minutes.
That's fine.
I'll hang on. I'll count on that.
Okay, items five and six on our agenda is the same property, and they're both looking for a continuance. It is Mark Rivet as the applicant and owner, review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a lot line adjustment. The parcels are located at 425 Daniel Webster Highway, 2 and 4 Railroad Avenue, and an unnumbered parcel off Railroad Avenue in the C2 General Commercial, and Aquifer Conservation, Flood Hazard Conservation, Elderly, and Town Center Overlay Districts, Tax Map 5D4, Lot 77, 78, 79, and 80. Tim, do you want me to read the other one in and we'll vote on them together?
You can do them both if you prefer, yes.
Okay, so the item six is the same property, it's review for acceptance and consideration of a site plan for the construction of a 1,890 square foot garage and function room addition and associated site improvements on that same parcel. The applicant has requested a continuance to October 2nd.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant the request of the applicant to continue both items at, meeting on October 2nd at 7:30 PM in this room with no further notice to abut us.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Second, ma'am.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to grant the continuance on both of those. That brings us to item seven, discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Enlisted on my list is a suggestion from the department is to talk about meeting packets.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I guess we didn't complete that subject well enough.
You kind of did last meeting, however, I don't think it's in the best interest for efficiency purposes to have an à la carte way of doing packets where everybody gets something different, so I'd prefer the board to come up with a single solution to this electronic versus not electronic. I believe, based on what I heard prior to the last meeting, the last time I was here, was that the majority of folks were comfortable with the memos and backup material being electronically provided, but to continue receiving paper plans. I believe that is, if we're going to do it, that's the way we do it, we do that, or all electronic, we don't have a mix and match depending on who the particular member is, because that would drive my staff nuts.
So I think that the person who was most concerned about having electronics was Nelson, who isn't here, and it was certainly related to plans, although...
I think all he cared about was the plans.
Getting the plans in paper. I don't know whether it saves anybody any work or much paper to have plans in an envelope mailed to us and then we go online to look at memos.
It actually is a significant, it's, it would be a significant savings, particularly for items that have a lot of backup materials.
Yeah. I think that that would work fine with me if I got everything electronic and in an envelope with some plans in them, personally. What do you guys think?
I agree with you.
I'm okay with giving it a trial.
And so, the only thing that I would say is on Friday or whatever, when the package goes out, an email with the link to wherever I've got to go to find my stuff.
That's the plan, where we'd be basically posting them in an unpublished link on the town website that you will have direct access to, which will link you to the memos and everything, so you just click on the link in the email, you should be able to get everything up.
Okay, perfect, I like that plan. Any other items of concern to discuss?
Why is that unpublished?
It just won't be anything that'll be, the direct link to the packet itself, the entire packet won't be, well, actually it will be, because I do that anyway with the direct links from the agenda that I publish right before the meetings anyway. So unless you're no to look in the agenda, but I'd be giving you guys in the email itself a separate link.
A more direct link.
A direct link, correct.
Other items?
I have one item, which I'd like, just to give everybody a report, there was a DOT meeting on 8/23 regarding improvements, so-called, to Route 101A in Meramec. My colleague, Tom Koenig, was there and also Nelson. I'll give you the main points of the proposal, they're proposing to add a third lane eastbound from the west point of Craftsman's Lane, which is where the pie place used to be, to the start of the existing third lane by Penachuck Square. That just, one lane on the eastbound side only, adding a sidewalk the full length of this, alongside this extra lane, completing on the sidewalk on the other side, which this, alongside this extra lane, completing on the sidewalk on the other side, which basically, it's, much of it's there, but there's a bit that isn't. They're going to rework the junction of Craftsman's Lane and Boston Post Road and making that a 90-degree junction, which is well past you, and they're going to close off the, the road that goes through the church car park halfway through. They're proposing to add pedestrian-controlled traffic lights on Continental Boulevard Route 101A Junction, and also pedestrian-controlled traffic lights at the Dunkin' Donuts/Home Depot 101A Junction. These improvements, which is 0.8 miles of roadway, is $4.1 million. I don't know if anybody else knows it, but I've looked at that site, and I should add, the consultants forgot to bring the traffic numbers or the details of the drainage, but they claim the junction will remain at Level C, and PC Connection site will not be flooded. It says this will significantly improve eastbound flow of traffic. I have to tell you, I disagreed with them. I disagree, integrated certain places where I think they got it wrong. If anybody wants a copy of the meeting, I have it here. There will be a further meeting sometime September, October, I think.
Late September, October is...
To go over it, and hopefully they will bring the information. My greatest worry is if you're putting in the third lane and a sidewalk on the southern side, which is where PC Connection side, it's going to go significantly affect parking on the Friendly's car park. I just throw that up as information. If anybody wants a copy of this little report, I'd be happy to hand it out. I brought a few for tonight. It's nothing we can do about it, but I'm just telling you what they want to do for $4.1 million, which knowing DOT will end up at six. And if you honestly think that's money well spent, good on you.
I won't debate their spending, but I do know that when we hear these projects and, you know, a minor rural bridge over a two-lane road is $4 million these days, so the spend